To the Thursday. Good evening, welcome to Thursday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, City of Plano. Being held in the Select Board hearing room at Town Hall. We have a post-vigilance there, a second.
Second.
A favor.
Aye.
I would like to introduce our all to your member, this is Mr. Patrick Dybower. Came to join us, we were very pleased with all of our applicants and everyone's work that we chose. Look forward to working with you yesterday. So, at six thirty, we have a public hearing of a major site review and stormwater permit. The Stevens Menorah Treatment Plant at four fifty-three Chief Justice Washington Highway. Now, because this is a big hearing, I'm going to do what I know will do to these meetings. We're going to hear from the design engineers. And we're going to hear from the board, and then we will go over the other stuff.
Our consulting engineer, Patty.
Paddy?
Our consulting engineer.
Hello, excuse me. Hello, Karen, your consulting engineer, sorry about that, Karen. Hold that down.
Are you ready for me to read?
I'm ready.
All right, at six thirty PM on Thursday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, in the Select Board hearing room, Town Hall, six hundred Chief Justice Washington Highway, six thirty. The planning board will conduct the following public hearing in connection with the applications submitted by Town of Situate. Construct a new thirty-five thousand square foot water treatment plant associated parking utilities and landscaping on existing Town of Situate property located at four fifty-three Chief Justice Washington Highway. Property as shown on the Cessar's map, forty-seven dash two dash two six, twenty-six J. Property is owned by Town of Situate. One, public hearing on a major site plan administrative review in accordance with Mass. General Law's chapter forty-eight, section eleven, and Situate zoning by law, section seven seventy, site plan review. Two, stormwater public hearing in accordance with Town of Situate general law section three two oh five oh, and its implementing regulations. The partners and other interest parties are invited to attend this hearing, et cetera, et cetera.
Good evening. State of the nation, introduce yourself to the public, thank you.
Sure. Steve, good evening. My name is Steve Robbins, Senior Technical Manager with Word and Current, and I'm very pleased to be with you all tonight. On behalf of the Town of Situate, it's Department of Public Works and Water Division to talk to you about this town's civic works project that will be transformative for the water supply here in town with the ability to provide clean water in a reliable, resilient, efficient manner for the future. What we intend to cover tonight. Joining me this evening is Renee and Lanza and Tony DiCapri. What we intend to cover tonight is some project background, project objectives, an overview of the site, talk through the building, the layout, the site, the stormwater resilience, and make sure you have plenty of time for Q and A from the board. As a matter of project background, the new water treatment plant project started with a water system master plan prepared for the town by Time Bond. That master plan recommended a new water treatment plant be constructed to serve the town's approximately nineteen hundred people here in town with water. The existing water supply provides an average of about one and a half million gallons per day of water, and the Old Oakin Bucket water treatment plant, which is shown in the image here, provides about half of the town's water during summer season. That treatment plant is aging, it's unable to effectively treat the water, and it does not have adequate redundancy and resiliency. It's also located in flood plain. And so the design of the new water treatment plant at Sterns, the Sterns Menor site was approved at the September twenty twenty-two special town meeting and proceeded from that point. The project objectives for the site, the new surface water treatment plant will, is designed for a permanent average day flow of about twenty-eight million gallons per day, a peak design capacity of three million gallons per day, and that's in keeping with the town's withdrawal permit from Old Oakin Bucket. The design process is designed to meet federal and state guidelines for turbidity, magnities, meet other water quality standards as applicable. We've also designed it to incorporate future heat mass treatment, which those regulations want to pass at the federal level. It has improvements for process automation and remote monitoring, promote efficient system operation, and we have designed it not hydraulically to be able to produce those three million gallons in about sixteen hours, which provides some kitchen capacity for the plants and some operations facilities. Back in the spring town meeting in twenty twenty-two, this was the concept, the proof of concept plan that was presented to the public. This site plan relocated all of the town's current water division functions that are at the existing Old Oakin Bucket site up onto the Sterns Menor site, inclusive of water treatment, administrative functions related to the water division, and distribution staff and storage garage. This relocation of that program up to this site includes improvements for water treatment efficiency, resiliency, worker safety, security of the site, and meets current design standards. Following public input on that concept, we then revised the town, the layout of the project, and this is what was presented at the September twenty twenty-two, excuse me, town meeting. The building area in this concept, we went from two buildings to one building, which reduced the building area by about twenty percent, reduced the previous area on the site by about thirty percent, and the facility footprint was shrunk by about a third from that original spring town meeting concept. We also, in responding to comments from the public and from the town, moved the building and the site layout more towards the Route Three A site, increasing the buffer to the rear, to the residence. Following that, we, and the authorization by the town, proceed on detailed design. Have this design being presented to you all for discussion tonight. This keeps the same building area footprint, again, a twenty percent reduction from the original size. The previous area of the site is reduced further still, or thirty-eight percent less on this layout than was originally presented, and the facility footprint was reduced by fifty-five percent from that original layout. In this concept, in response, ongoing design development and concepts, responding to the public, we have further pulled the site program further to the south in a way from the abutting properties to the rear. We reduced the circulation on the site and moved the storage garage function from the northern part of the site to the southern part of the site and tucked it underneath the building. So we actually have two levels on the southern part of the site. We'll go through their renderings thoroughly, but all in effort to, to refine, to tighten up, and to make this facility as compact and as in keeping with the neighborhood character as we can. Provided overview of the parking layout on the site. The facility is primarily used by the water division staff. There are fifteen full staff in that division, between ten and fourteen will be at the site during the day. That includes four treatment plant operators, eight distribution crew members, two administrative personnel at the site, and one superintendent. We anticipate a daily average of three for visitors to the site. That may include a member of the public that needs to meet with the water division, may include a contractor that needs to pick up a temporary water meter, or an equipment service. As such, to minimize the amount of previous area we have on the site, we're proposing nineteen parking spaces. There are eighteen traditional parking spaces, eight at the lower garage area on the southern part of the site, and ten in the front parking area accessing the upper level of the building, and included that's one EBA access. In terms of circulation around the building, the public circulation starts from stops in the northern and northeastern part of the site, coming in from the northern entrance and pulling into some of those ten parking spaces in the front of the building, and then turning around and exiting out of that. Access to the rear of the site is controlled by a locked gate for security purposes. So the only vehicles that would pull around to the rear of the building would be facility staff and a deliveries to the building. What we have shown here are two vehicle driving paths, the one on the left for a fire truck, the fire department, make sure we're modeling their vehicle, largest vehicle correctly. So the blue line there shows that truck entering from the north, being able to circulate the building fully and exit out the southern entrance, southern entrance is exit. And then we've also modeled a delivery truck, which is actually our constraining case. It's a WB fifty semi-trailer, indicative of maybe a chemical delivery or other large delivery that's occurring to the site. They're able, again, to circulate around the rear of the building, so I have the curvature of the roadway, the slopes of the roadway to accommodate that. Our team retained services of Chappelle Engineering to prepare a traffic study. Their findings were that the traffic increases to the site are minimal and well within typical traffic fluctuations, using a very conservative method. Their methodology used the Institute for Transportation Engineering Generation Manual, Land Use Utility Code of Utilities, and a thirty thousand square building. That ended up with a three point three percent increase in traffic on peak hours on the north driveway, and a four point seven percent increase in traffic on the south, southern entrance. According to Mass DRT Traffic Impact Assessment Guidelines, no further evaluations are needed based on those thresholds, and we think that that's a very conservative level of generation estimates, given the actual nature and usage and population at the site. Again, typical shifts for water department are seven AM to three PM. There are fifteen water division staff that will be coming and going. They will come and go a couple of times per day, and so in talking with water division and looking at how that staff may come and go from the site, we think a realistic estimate for weekday trips are a hundred and fifteen per day. And again, this is existing traffic that occurs to the existing facility at Old Oakin Bucket that's just being shifted up the road to the new facility. Looking at an overview of the building and its dimensions, the building's about thirty-five thousand square feet overall. There are three main components of the building. Treatment process area is the bulk of the building, it's the largest mass on the northern part of the site. And then we have operations for distribution and administration and storage garage, which is essentially that east-west-southern gable of the site as a stack. There, in total, in the thirty-five thousand square foot area, it's about fifty-nine hundred square foot of offices. When we look at the building height, we have designed the building with a gable and slope roof, both in keeping with the town's request to have a slope roof on this building for maintenance purposes, as well as in keeping with the residential character of the neighborhood. The gable roofs are common in this area, and we felt the flat roof in this location would be a much more industrial and commercial look than the adjoining buildings. There's no getting around the size of the building, it is large, it needs to be big to fit all of the treatment equipment that's going inside it. And so when we worked with the roof pitches that we maintained that gable structure, we end up with an average height of thirty-four, almost thirty-four and a half feet, thirty-four feet, four inches, and a peak height of just over forty-five feet in the processing area of the highest. The materials proposed are looking to mimic appropriate colors for this area and for the community. We have an asphalt single roof with a dark gray color. We use a combination of cement cord and toned concrete basing unit in grays, grays, blues, and browns with white accents in that color. Stormwater requirements and design constraints, we are in the flood plain and watershed protection district, although we are not in flood plain directly. We are in water resource protection district since we are a hill of attack factory farm. These require us to maintain ninety percent TSS removal. We need to retain groundwater by groundwater recharge and runoff. Our slopes, following grading, need to get for water better. We need to be able to control rate and volume of stormwater from the site. And while the soils, set soils are done with soil training, they do perk, and so we have to meet our stormwater design through that. The general stormwater approach consists of a combination of ash basins in previous areas, split corbas to bio infiltration, infiltration to meet our TSS removal. Flow rates, we're looking at reductions in flow rates from existing conditions. Assuming the minimum perk rate on the site, we're able to manage our flow volume to just a two percent, twenty-five percent increase for the hundred year storm on the site overall. And we have adequate volume retained on the site for groundwater recharge with the design standards. In terms of climate resilience for this facility, the new treatment plant is fully outside flood plain, like the existing facility. The equipment proposed for the building is the most efficient that we can use. We have premium efficiency motors, we've got lighting inside. We've used to the greatest extent possible the topography of the site to work with our treatment plant hydraulics, using gravity on slope site. The facility is, will have an EV charging station for town vehicles at the site. The building is solar ready, we have some nice southern exposure on some of the roofs, and the building structure is being designed to accommodate future solar panels on the roof. And we've designed the treatment process to have no discharge from the site. Existing filters at the existing treatment plant do backwash into the town sewer system, and we've been able to retain that volume on the site and recycle that flow back through the treatment process to be as efficient as we possibly can. We're going to present some renderings of the site, but I again wanted to give some context, the layout of the building on the site, just for perspective. North to south on the building, again, we have the northern driveway entrance, we have the main process side of the building. On the southern face of the building, we have the storage garage and administrative functions. Down further below the site, we have our sand drying beds, for the treatment process residuals. We are managing stormwater on the site through a number of corbas and infiltration basins, which are shown as outlined features, there's like nine shown on the drawing. If I come back just a little bit, one more. There's two lines around the site that I do want to highlight. The, the interior line of a fence line around the site is a secure perimeter around the site, the end of the site. At the end of construction, we're pulling back to that line, that's the secure fence line. The interior to that, surface treatments are generally grass that can be mowed and maintained for the treatment operations. Then there's a, a second line, which is our limited work line, which is what we need for grading and installation stormwater practices. And between the fence line and that outer line would be reforested meadow grass cover, or sorry, meadow cover in that area so that it is a more natural state in those areas that don't need ready maintenance. This is a rendering of the proposed facility. We're looking towards the northwest, over the southern entrance to the site. What we can see on this in the right-hand side is the public parking spaces, walkway access to the main vestibule entrance to the building. And then on the left-hand side of the site, the storage garage, bay doors in that area. Getting a little bit higher and further to the east in this rendering, we see the overall context of the site, including the sand drying beds and the stormwater features on the site, especially on the southern end of the property. In terms of a, a layout plan. Are we getting any questions? Yes, yes, question? In terms of a layout plan, we've talked through most of these features, so I don't need to spend too much time on this particular element of the site. One thing that I did want to mention on this that I haven't discussed yet is on the western side of the building, in the center of the process area, is where we have a loading dock to be able to move bulk materials in and out of the building. We do have a hammerhead in that to allow vehicles to be able to pull, again, from the northern entrance down, be able to back up to that loading dock. We're not proposing any parking on the rear side of the building, adjacent to the neighbors. In terms of grading and drainage, again, the site currently slopes from north to south, our grading works with that drainage. We did look at the possibility of using previous materials, given the heavy truck traffic of the site and some of the slopes involved, we didn't, for this particular site, we have implemented other stormwater management techniques, improving, really splitting up the flows as best as possible with the management of smaller quantities, and make sure that we're controlling runoff, which eventually goes towards the southern and southwestern parts. In terms of site utilities, we do have site piping primarily within the fence line. We're connecting to the raw water and finished water piping through the northern site entrance. There will be natural gas service to the site for heating. That will also come through that, that northern side entrance most likely. We have electrical service, again, at that northern entrance, which will be transitioned to the low-grade electrical through the site. We do have some site piping for stormwater, and then again, we have piping from the sand drying beds back to the head of the plants, and we recycle those. From a landscape architecture perspective, we'll pretty heavily do planting, especially on the northern part of the site, where the site is narrowest, and we do have closer distances to, to the neighbors, towards the rear of the site, if you have some large tree plantings, and then again, a meadow treatment, transitional habitat type treatment in our remaining disturbed area. We do have plantings on the front of the building to restore some buffer to Route Three A, we are maintaining a fifty-foot buffer along Route Three A, but we do have plantings around the entrance to soften the load, and make sure it's not too commercial of appearance. We do replace an appropriate number of trees for the number of parking spaces that we have for the town. Site lighting is within that secure perimeter and is primarily focused on security. We do have a limited number of lighting fixtures on the building itself, primarily on the front, or public access, especially you have plowie or during clear months when working hours are still dark. And then around the perimeter of the roadway, we do have shielded lighting fixtures for security purposes. That's what we have for receiving, certain welcome comments and discussion here for the board and poll.
Thank you very much. I only have one question, which was not addressed. We know there's a very small cemetery up there.
Yes.
That is protected by, I know, provided, especially with a walkway, right?
Yes, thank you for mentioning that. There is that existing cemetery, and we have preserved a walkway from the public parking area to that.
So now we'll turn over to our peer review, what you can. I know you.
Okay, let's wait to hear so that. And we'll pick up, okay, I'll speak up. Hi, my name is Jennifer Nardo, I'm a professional engineer with the Horstley-Witten Group, and we were brought on to conduct a peer review of this project for, on behalf of the planning board. We provided a letter dated September sixth, and part of the letter goes through all of the various zoning requirements that the project was required to apply with or comply, comply with along the way. I, we listed them all as we kind of went along to show that they were looked at. There's really not that many zoning issues that were brought up. It does seem like there was a height, a building height comment, and I actually came up with a different height than you just showed on there. I was like, huh, I got my height wrong. But then I saw there was something about maybe it's a municipal building, and they weren't required to, so I think it's a building height issue. So that's something to be addressed and to be thought through. I understand there's a tree survey that's out there, is that happening? Is there a need to comment about all the trees, and the solid ones are over twelve inches, and that's happening? Yeah, true.
We're under contract, trying to get them out there.
Count all those trees, there's a lot of them, I think, I forgot I said again. One comment I was wondering about was if there's any drinking wells shown within four hundred feet, I'm assuming that there are known, none, but I was wondering. And confirmed that the fire department is okay with the whole layout, and that the border health is okay with the separate system design, then. If I could just try to, we have got, we received no comments from the border health or the fire department. So those will have to be received by the planning board along the way. There's a cut and fill analysis that's out there that will be brought in at some stage, and again, the treaty. There was a lot of pages, but I tried to circle, I tried to come up with a system so that you can jump into the numbers. The first one was on page five, by the way, and then the second was on page nine, and then you'd get a few more. Light poles, there, I came up with the town requirement is twenty-foot maximum, you were showing thirty-foot maximum. Is that something to be addressed?
Yes.
And there is, our, my understanding is there's no pedestrian or bicycle networks in the area, is that a true statement?
That is true, we are contemplating it like right on the side.
Great. So then the second half, so that was the first half of the zoning requirements, and that includes setbacks, again, heights, pedestrian walkways, there was a number of items in there, zoning requirements that the applicant needed to meet to comply with as everybody else has to meet in town. So we kind of went through that, that was pages one through twelve, and we all had eight comments that were outstanding. So then I moved on to stormwater management, and, which is really my thing, the kind of like rating, feeling the storms. So, the applicants required to meet the ten Masters of Stormwater Handbook standards. So I kind of listed those out, standards one through ten. Standard one basically says that they are not allowed to have any erosion in the wetlands or the water of the pond. They are not discharging close to the pond and more than two hundred feet away from the pond, the lake. So they're, they're far from that, but there are some isolated bedded wetlands on the site, which according to the Situate Conservation Commission, require protection. They are planning to fill one of those, they'll have to go to the Conservation Commission to get that approval, and then there is one that they are discharging too. So they will need to explain any impacts to that particular isolated bedded well, and that, there's three of them that do not seem to be impacted at all, one that will be impacted. So the comment was to make sure the conservation commission understands if there's any impact at all to that isolated bedded wetland. And then they will also have to go to Mass DOT and get a permit to discharge anything onto the street, or just a curb cut permit from Mass DOT because it's a state highway. Standard 2 says that they cannot increase any flow to the wetlands or offsite, anywhere offsite. They are, they have to evaluate their existing flow rate going offsite, and then they have to show that they've had so much stormwater management that they're not increasing it under post-development. So we reviewed all of that. A lot of them, a lot of our comments are technical, as that they, maybe the inverts that they showed were wrong, were different than what was modeled. So there's a whole stormwater model that was done. We kind of looked at the plans, we looked at the model, we compared them to make sure that what they're modeling is what's being designed. And so there's a number of comments regarding that. I think the biggest question I really have, I think most of these comments are things that the applicant will be able to address, is that a true statement? Is why the detention basin, the larger detention basin is not, you're not infiltrating that? I'm kind of, I'm trying to figure it out. It didn't seem like, seemed like you could, but I couldn't figure out why you're not, because it seems like it would help.
At this stage, I was just conservative, Sasha.
Okay, it's just.
Assuming we weren't getting it.
Okay, so that was just a conservative idea, which I thought may be true, but I, if you can, maybe it will be helpful. Because there seems to be a volume increase going offsite. The situat regulations say that you cannot increase the volume off the site as well as the flow. So you have your amount of flow, that's, the water's flowing off the site, that's calculated by the different storm events, and that they cannot increase. But there's also a volume that's associated with the amount of water that's leaving the site. And Mass TP does not require you to not, to talk about it, but the town and situat regulations say you cannot increase. At the moment, they're increasing it a little bit. So if they can come up with a way to not increase it, everybody would be much happier. When it comes right down. So that was, so there's a number of comments, understandably too, because that's the technical one, that they have to use the model, and it's, it's just. I'm not going to include this kind of one, but, but it is a little like technical stuff, as long as you're able to address them and you don't have any questions about any of them, then we're good to go. Standard 3 is about recharge, and the applicant has to show that they are recharging any additional incurvious cover. So the existing site is woods, so now they're adding this big building and a parking lot, and they have to show that they can recharge everything according to the soil type. And which is a C soil, I believe, or D. And so they were able to, they have designed four fire retention areas, which are a rain garden, it's a depression in the ground that the stormwater will run into. And it's, usually it's planted with some interesting flowers, and it has maybe a foot of storage in it, and then it will, water will recharge into the ground. And they're, they're lovely. They're a lovely stormwater practice. They have, they're usually base flowers, they're usually Texas flowers that can have their feet a little bit wet and their roots a little bit wet. And it allows recharge in this, and they have done four of those. It's considered low impact development, it's considered green infrastructure, it's a hot topic. We've been designing it for a long time, and they seem to work really well. And so that's great. One of them is lined, because I believe it's because of groundwater, it's supposed to be groundwater. So they're lining one, and then they, everything, there's a swell that is a swell, in case you don't know, is kind of like a ditch. But it is a, just a conveyance more than anything. The water will kind of go into it, and it gets directed to either one of those bios or into the detention basin. And the detention basin is the largest structure in the back, but that is relatively large area. You can see it on the plans, it's just a kind of big circle. And that will hold water for the longest, that will take most of the water coming from the whole site. And right at the moment, they are not including infiltration of that, but I think they may try to, and that will help the site. But it will also have water in it. So the bio-retention areas, they'll have water when it first rains, then it will all work with several brew, and the flowers will suck up the water, and the water will go up to the ground, and that's great. The detention basin has a lot of water, it's a big area, and it will have a foot, couple feet of water, and then it will go out. So it has to leave within 72 hours, but it will have water in it, so if anybody happens to see it with water in it, that's okay. It's not, it's supposed to have some water. As it infiltrates, it will have less water. So standard 3 is about requiring recharge. They are doing that, they wanted to confirm that they have separation to groundwater on their bios. I believe that they do, so it was just a matter of confirming that a little bit. Standard 4 is about water quality, and they need to show that they are providing a specific amount of water quality with the type of stormwater practices they have. The roof runoff is considered clean, so, because it's the pavement and the cars and the trees that are landing on the driveway that makes the water dirt. But the roof runoff is kind of gets you to clean, so that can be directed right to one of the basins, can go right to the detention basin, and it doesn't need anything else. But the road where it ran off, the parking lot, that all goes to one bio-retention areas, rain gardens, which provides a good amount of treatment, that's great. They also have some water quality devices, which are just concrete structures that are in the ground, that provide an opportunity for more settlement. It's a catch basin, which is, the catch basin is the structure that you see in the street, that has a grate on top of it, and the water goes into it, the water goes in that, it pipes. Then it goes into this other structure that lets more sediment come out of it and settle out, that gets cleaned on an annual basis. Water keeps going to the next project. So they have many trains to provide a lot of water quality. Before, against the, on, this is the water treatment plant, they do not want to pollute the water in any way, so it's really important that they provide all this water quality along. So they've done a really great job on that part. We had a couple of questions, really, to confirm the volume that's being provided, because I couldn't quite figure it out on that information. There's a, standard 5 is about land use with higher potential pollut loads, which is really like your gas stations, so this does not qualify, so they didn't have to do anything for standard 5. Standard 6 is if they were in a critical area, they are located within the water resource protection district, which is considered a critical area, and that's why they had to do extra stuff for the water quality. They did that, they did all the things they needed to do, so there was no further comment about that. Standard 7 is about redevelopment. This is totally new development, because it's an existing wooded site, so they didn't have to do anything with redevelopment. Standard 8 talks about erosion control, and they will need to make sure that during construction, there is no erosion that goes into any wetland or real off the site. So they will have their entire perimeter will have silt socks, the silt fences, the black fences, there's maybe green, stop log kind of things that are on the ground. Sometimes yellow, they're different colors. And that protects the water, so when there's construction equipment and there's piles of sediment and that starts to run off, it kind of gets stuck all around the site. And it shouldn't go anywhere outside of that silt fence line, so that's part of their erosion control, and they'll have a construction entrance, so the trucks won't have mud going off onto the street. It's really important to make sure that no sediment from the construction goes into any of the existing catch basins or comes off the street. So they'll be protecting all of that, and that's part of their plan of attack. Then they will have to, because it's larger than an acre, they will need to meet the environmental protection agency's construction, they have to get a construction general permit. And that is called a MINTD's permit for, let me write it down. It's a construction internal permit that needs a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is all about the erosion controls. So if you hear the word SWIP, it's a stormwater pollution prevention plan that they will be providing. And the planning board may wish to make a receipt of receiving that as a condition of approval. Standard 9 has to do with operation and maintenance, which is really important for long-term. This will be operated and maintained by the town and situat. They have a, we did one, but yeah, they prepared their, a whole plan, it's part of their report, and it's about cleaning out the catch basins, cleaning out their water quality units. Cleaning up the bio-retention areas, improving any of the dead plants that are in there, and making sure that they continue to infiltrate if there's any areas that are not behaving like they're expecting. That's something that gets flagged, and extra work is done to make sure that it continues to work as it's designed to work. So they have a whole operation maintenance plan, and it's something else that the planning board may want to have a condition of approval on. Then there's, standard 10 is a illicit discharge statement that basically says that the property owner or the tenant, but the facilitator of the building, which is the town and situat, the water department, they sign off saying that they understand that no part of their building water is going into the stormwater system that's not supposed to. So like, they can't hook up their washing machine and send it to their bio-retention area, because that would be considered an illicit discharge. And it's important that the property owner does, this is saying if it's a house, so that they're the ones that are saying they understand, they heard this, they are not doing it, and they can't say, oh, I didn't know. So the engineers all know that we can't do that, but the property owners is supportive of that. So that, you are, they're going to provide one, and that is something that the planning board may want to figure out. But that was basically what we did, what we reviewed. They did a very nice job. There's not that much to respond to.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your review. You have a draft reply that is just pending additional comments to this.
Great, great.
Can I just let the public know? I know there's some hands raised online. We're just not at the public comment part yet, and we will get, we will get to you. We're going to go through comments from the board and the town planner, but we will get to the public comment, so I just want you to know, we're not ignoring your raised hand.
Yeah, so we'll leave a copy of your slideshow tomorrow. On the, we do have to prepare the SWIP plan. I think we, because the mountain land servants, you're going to have to do sedimentation subs as well. We would like to see where you're going, possibly locate them as well. There needs to be a waiver for the volume requirement for the stormwater regulations. So the planning board is going to have to decide, are you willing to give a waiver or not give a waiver? To me, it seems like they're awful close, but they could probably make the volume requirement work, and they kind of indicated they were going to go back and try to do it. But that, that's going to be a bottom-line question. I'm still reviewing the landscape plan. I'm going to be asking for a few changes. Some of the plans that you're proposing are just not readily available in the landscape industry. And it's kind of hard to read the landscape plan, figure out what's really where, and I think I'm going to be looking for a few more evergreens for screening all year round. Parking, you just received a parking memo today. The planning board has to make a determination if the parking is adequate, based on, because it's not a use that's at the table, parking uses. So you're going to have to make that determination if that is adequate. That's why a parking memo was requested. The only comment we received was the comment from the building commissioner on the height of the building, and they are working on that issue. I understand there's probably a meeting set up for next week to discuss that, so they are working on that. So I really don't think it's a big, it's a big issue to get into tonight. The only other issue that I had talked with Renee about was, I thought the trip generation seemed really high, and peak hour traffic was 37, excuse me, 39 to 41 trips. And Renee kind of explained that it's based on the land, the land use code for utility, which kind of assumes a lot of any type of utility. That was the closest relationship's code for the project, so that kind of indicating it will be theoretically a little bit less, that less trips, you know, based on the actual usage of the site. That's kind of where I am at the moment, but I think it's hardcore to come to.
Okay, well, thank you. Really, I can tell you my first admission is this is much more secure than our trip, so absolutely, definitely. I went to see the M and I, and I did not, but I take a lot of our trip in France online, for our trips. So I'm glad that this is going to be completely protected, although it's still a huge concern, of course, we waste water, okay, public traffic law. Rebecca, do you have anything to say?
I do have a question for you. Well, two questions. A, is it, there's a big gate around there, which is obvious, I mean, how, is it locked, like, can only employees get in?
Yes, they'll use the town's standard key, equal access system.
And how about people going to the cemetery?
The cemetery parking would occur in the visitor spots in the front of the building, and then we have sidewalks and the walkway.
One last question. And I feel like I already have a really answer to this. There is a place in situat where you can go to the water department, because those people are not.
The only people coming to this building are those that are located at the existing point of the site.
Just test out, or else they should be more tracked.
Could I, yeah, but you might ask your question, so the people that are currently working, Laura and Mrs. Fulton, are they moving?
They are moving.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you. So they are moving over to the water department, okay, thank you. Okay, Rebecca, another.
Can I just work off of your presentation, and as it went on? First question is, you said this was designed to handle future regulations on P-PAS? So what's it designed to, what standard is it designed to? Does that mean that we can actually treat it, or that there's room to put equipment?
Both. The existing, or the proposed filters are granular activated carbon filters with more than 10 minutes empty bed contact time, which is the design standard for P-PAS treatment to non-detect levels. We have a little bit of work to do on exactly which GAC can provide both the biological removal we need as well as that P-PAS removal. We have a limited amount of space in the treatment footprint over the proposed disinfection basin, where future treatment process could be added. Downwind, other water quality requirement track.
So there's been some thought about having room for expansion without having expand builds?
Without being excessive in the footprint that's being proposed, yes, we're not building one.
I guess we haven't heard from the fire department, one of the things that wants to know is just how the plant can fight fire.
We have, we've met with the fire department, they've reviewed the interior plans to the building, as well as the exterior circulation, interaction with them. Around exactly which vehicles they refer into the site and around hybrid placement at the site, where the hybrids are fed from. Since this is a water supply facility, you want water coming from inside the building or from outside, and working through those issues. So the plans presented here are responsive to those comments that we received during that meeting. I'm sure they'll weigh in for me.
Okay, so we're still expanding. Okay, so we're still expecting?
I sent it, we sent it to all town departments. All town departments are not very responsive.
Equipment, what, what equipment will be onsite, heavy equipment that, and where will it store?
The, there is a storage garage which has five bays at this facility, which is designed to house the water divisions, utility trucks and heavy equipment. So that it's all stored inside.
Motor is.
All of the equipment.
All that's going inside and outside.
Protected from the weather.
This general question you really mentioned, what, what's kind of an expected use for like this facility?
Fifty plus years, individual mechanical components, maybe less, but that's a, I think a good design life for a treatment plant.
So a little high question. I, I think I would agree with Karen that you're close enough on the volume management framework to figure out exactly. The sand bases. So I noticed that they go right up the sand bases. What look like overflow devices, water flow devices that didn't seem here. Is there some kind of mechanism to deal with excessive water?
The way the, the sand drying beds are designed are based on Massachusetts DEP criteria for backwashing of filters and rate and volume. Combined with the solids moving that you understand from the source water through our pilot testing and the chemicals that are being added to purify the water. That is all designed then to accommodate rainfall and additional freeboard above that. The structure that I think you're referring to is actually a decant structure. So there's two ways for us to get water out of that sand drying jet and back to the head of the plant. The first is, is through the bottom, there's a sand layer on the bottom, the water breaks down, we've gone out, up the back. On the end, after a period of settling, if the operators want to draw water off the top of that, that is a slide gate structure that will allow us to decant from the top in addition to going out from the bottom.
Yeah, so there's no, no expectation that this would ever overflow, we would end the material run.
The primary water source that goes to these basins is the backwash from the filter, not rainfall, and so it's under the operators' control.
I noticed in your rendering, which I haven't seen before, there's a section of the building that has a flat roof.
Yes.
Are you concerned about snow and ice buildup when everything looks like it can feed rather than that?
We're not. We've designed that component of the building to have appropriate weather waterproofing against the walls of that structure. It does have an internal drain, a slot boost that we can do. A bit of it, it's an architectural feature to blend the, and connect the two main gates without being excessive with the frame.
Okay, so, and maybe, maybe Janet knows this too, but we talked a while ago about when we actually construct this thing. A fair amount of it's below groundwater level. So is there a groundwater management plan during construction? Has that been presented?
We have, in our specifications, performance criteria for that. The contractor is part of their construction plans, would need to submit their means and methods for control of that. But we are aware of that and the construction sequencing counts for de-watering onsite management.
So that's in the construction.
It would be.
I don't remember saying, you remember saying?
I don't remember.
So there's a blend of, yeah, there's a blend of what we specify and what the contractor comes back to the town and proposes the means and methods. Do I know that as part of a planning board review, you don't receive all of our technical specifications, so if there's additional supplemental information you have, right?
I, I was just trying to understand what you expect the program to be. Like, because those are the things like exposure, dump it a lot, silos set up somewhere.
Yes, the expectations that they're managing.
What kind of, I'm talking about what your design, if you think the destruction needs will be. You have that, I had thought. Can you kind of articulate that?
I think I'd rather provide that as supplemental commission doors. So I'm pretty detailed in here.
The SWIP plan is going to have to identify where you're dwelling to and maybe songs are. So I think we're interested in seeing the general, we understand that the contractor has to, is responsible for some of this, but the contractor doesn't design the site, you guys decide the site. So you need to design how he's going to handle the deep water and the soils.
We can provide that as a supplemental petition.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, buddy.
I just had a whole bunch of questions. Floor drains. Where are these, assuming floor drains, where are floor drains?
There are limited floor drains in the building. We do have a containment tank where we're managing the water that comes from the onsite laboratory, safety showers and floor drains in, in areas where there are.
Oh, I missed that. Where, where is that? Okay.
Sure, it's on the front of the building.
Yeah, I missed that.
There's a, yep, there's a dark rectangle there that not.
Oh, you can see it now.
That's below grid, correct, yeah. The dark area there.
Yeah, right here.
It's under the, it's under the.
It needs to move by a, by a truck.
That's being pumped out. Lab waste is going there?
Yes.
And then just one other question if you can sort of help explain. There's a laundry list of chemicals that you're using here. And can you sort of explain how we can ensure that none of that ends up washing down? Webbed ends anywhere else. Like, what's the, what's the containment like?
Yeah, the containment requirement is to contain a hundred and ten percent of the volume on site. So when a truck comes in with bulk chemical, there's a designated moving area for them that is, the truck will park within that certain area.
Where's that?
It's on the northern side of the building. It's, that, that area is not, not shown here, but it is along that northern wall. Our capital room interior to the building is along that northern wall.
So tank and trucks or whatever that are coming in that are circulating, there are, there's a, there's a containment parking area.
Correct.
Doesn't just, it just doesn't show up here.
That's correct.
And that's a hundred and ten percent of the largest truck volume, truck volume. How, how much is that?
Six thousand gallons.
Okay, and then inside, where is it going to be stored? Is there additional container there?
Correct. Again, a hundred and ten percent at a minimum of the largest tank volume in each of the capital areas.
So that would be the thirty five. Oh, no, that's a second tank.
That's a second tank. It's.
What's the largest inside?
Largest interior tank is, I'm going to get back to. Less than ten thousand gallons.
Probably have it in your cellar. Okay, that's, I'll turn it over to.
We're glad you have any questions. Okay. I'm glad to see that people are making this facility secure. Right now, people, whether they're landscapers or whomever they are, use a hydrant down by the water. Final point, will that be allowed to continue? Because this is a secure place.
That's a, a policy question for the water department. But thank you for this.
Which I think they need to. And the other thing is looking, could you pull that up again, please? And you come in one way, you go around the building and you come back out. So it's one way, is that correct?
That's correct.
It appears to be that there is a gate where the building meets. All right, and where are the public parking spaces in front?
Yeah, I'm going to put the parking line, that's going to be better.
So the public will not go around the building.
No.
So the public can, they have to go in and out, but right inside, correct? Yes, all right. So that gate is that, with the door, that's all right? So, yeah. Yeah, so this is, right, all right. If that's what I was thinking of, where the apartment spaces are. The other question I have is, why do we need so many parking spaces? You have two people who are, that are transferring from the water department to this building with administrators, whatever they are, and water superintendent, that's three. And then you have people that are coming and going. Why do we need all those parking spaces?
We have four water operators.
But they're not there all day. They're not, they're coming and going.
Those water operators are primarily operating the treatment equipment, so they are, they're.
All right.
The. The heat distribution staff arrive in a personal vehicle and leave with the town vehicle.
Oh, so they don't drive their trucks home at night? Oh, okay. That, that July, I was unclear on that. Okay, and the big trucks will be parked under the building?
Yes.
All right, so you can't.
I heard earlier, you said everything's part of that. The equipment.
Their storage.
Yes. Yes.
Town is going trucks. So, okay.
Well, yeah, would you mind if I just follow up a quick question? Because I'm not sure I heard the same answer.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I thought you said that all town equipment is being parked in the garage.
The water department equipment, there's space in the garage. It's a double D bay.
Right.
To park there.
It's definitely parked outside of the person vehicles.
That's the intent, whether, you know, there is a D bay where that vehicle is, given what's going on in the garage.
Yeah, I get that.
We provide a space for inter-ranch.
Generally, the idea is those are inside.
Yes. Can I fast up to that question? Are the EV charging stations for town, town vehicles in the garage? Well, no, it would be external. So, and where, what, near the garage or?
I would think. If you, if you put a charging station in the garage, I, I really think that that's important, that you probably have two of them, if you have all these trucks and other equipment that are in there, have the EVs inside and outside. Because my goal is not to put any trucks inside.
Did get some concern from the fire department on potential fire hazard. So that's just one thing that we're considering.
And the place where the sprinkles will be, right?
Yes.
But even so, I have just a problem with all these trucks. And also to, my big concern is maintenance. And I know that there will be, and I know. But this town is historically awful when it comes to maintenance. And I know that we have facilities manager, et cetera, et cetera. And I know that we have a building that is now getting a new roof that has been here for, yeah, fifteen. So you, things need to be maintained. And somehow, maybe it has to be in, in our determination or, well, whatever. But this, I mean, that is historically awful when it comes to maintaining. We just don't do it.
That's a personality issue, too. Somebody needs others to go, maybe some reason.
I know, but I think it's something that needs to be recognized.
Absolutely. I'll give back to Mr. McLean. Do you have something for us tonight? The stormwater man?
I, I do, I actually, the question I have isn't about the stormwater. It just related to the project objective slide where it said that it was three million gallons could be processed in sixteen hours. And I was just wondering, yeah, why'd you use the three million gallons metric in the sixteen hours metric? Are you just trying to get to three million gallons or is there? Could they, you know, could, could water be treated at that rate over a twenty four, forty eight hour period? So a million and a half gallons per eight hours. I was just wondering, the, the odd numbers of three million for sixteen hours.
Sure. The firm capacity of the plant is three million gallons per day over a twenty four hour production period. The town currently typically runs one, one operator shift during the day. We were asked by DPW in the water division to make sure that the plant is hydraulically capable of treating that three million gallons in a short amount of time. So it needed to be two shifts that it could be done. In doing so, that's a peaking capacity for the plant that accounts for the use of reserve or, or, or redundant infrastructure. So in the firm capacity of a plant, we are able to take any one individual piece of equipment offline and still maintain that flow capacity. And that's what the three NGD over twenty four hours is. So if all components of the plant are in operation, they have hydraulic re- capability to put three million gallons through in a shorter period of time.
Okay.
But it taps into that redundancy and.
Does he, the inverse is true, if they have capacity before half the gallons in twenty four hours?
That's correct.
Do you want to say, Mr. McLean?
I am, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question on the, the treatment plant process description. It looks like that it all gets tested, but it looks like the raw water is coming from the old open bucket existing plant pump station. And I'm assuming that's through existing, the existing water line along three A, existing piping number three A.
No, it's through the existing intake in open bucket to that treatment plant. Right now, that, that raw water pump station just feeds the building treatment plant on site.
So how is that connected to the new plant?
The town currently has a watering construction project along three A that includes a future water pipeline.
Okay, so that, that will be addressed to these.
Of course, above three A, yes. Okay, now a little introduction, public, please make sure that you stay in the evening your address. Please keep all of our statements short and to the point, personal, and try not to repeat ourselves too much, okay? It's a big project. So if there's anybody in the food network that would like to, well, okay.
Thank you. Frank Schlegel, I'm on Water Resource Commission and. Sorry, you were talking about LED lighting and stuff in the design, but I didn't hear anything about water sense fixtures. Is that all within that?
Yeah, absolutely. Certainly, as a, a water treatment plant, you want to be responsible users of water and so pumping fixtures to. Do you agree?
Thank you. Miss Nick. Hi, Stacy Smith, thirteen stairs row, on the other on the board's side. I'm curious, do you have any sense of how often trucks are going to be coming in, these big trucks? And come around that living.
The, the bulk chemical storage tanks are designed to hold thirty days of supply. So we have five chemicals on site. So you might, on average, expect a chemical delivery per week. The town trucks do have the ability to navigate around the site, but that, the chemical deliveries are the primary truck traffic.
I ask a second question. In terms of, when I look at the plans, I can't see what the above the zone is. I mean, I'm on the north side, so that's smaller. So what is the fact of the above the zone? So what is the fact of the buffer zone at the back of the building?
When you say the back of the building, do you mean on the northern side of the building, or do you mean the west?
I mean, along the butters.
Yep.
On the west side.
So we have, uh, maintained a, a thirty foot buffer where there's no activity at all. Um. And in many cases, it's, it's more than that, we do need to have some separation from the final footprint of the building to construct the building. Um, and that area is proposed to be re-landscaped with a mixture of deciduous and, uh, evergreen trees and meadow ground cover. Uh, and I know the town planner has some comments on that as well.
And I'm just curious, how, when they come in to do the clear cutting, uh, how, what's the oversight to make sure that that buffer is maintained?
The first step in. In the construction project is for a surveyor to come out on the site and mark the limit of work line. And for the contractor to come in and establish erosion settlement controls interior to that line. Um, and the town would have a full-time inspector on site during construction to.
Great, thank you, that's my best.
Uh, yes, sir. Good job.
You said the buffer is gonna be deciduous.
Can maybe add us with some.
Sorry, thirty-five sterns row, Scottsburg, Stone, direct butters to the plan. You said there's gonna be planting, so deciduous and evergreen, deciduous are gonna lose their bees in the winter time, is there. Possibility of evergreen, a row of evergreens, the wall of evergreen, I'm providing, guy, I'm providing something that's just gonna. So only looking at green rather than any building?
Yeah, we, uh, we were looking in the landscaping plan to make sure that we were providing. The day of species, um, and species that would provide biodiversity on the site. Um, in addition to the visual screening and making sure that we were trying to blend back the site into. Uh, kind of transitional habitat appropriate for, you know, an old farm to be able to work or something of that nature. Um, but certainly, we'll take that comment back to the landscape team and make sure that you add appropriate, uh, or something, an added, uh.
And pretty much that buffer, so when you're talking, because it's all deciduous, there's rare. Very huge evergreen that we can see at least.
Yeah.
So those are, those leaves are going down in the winter, and that's just gonna be bare straight to the plant as well, that's why the wall of evergreen. And I know you want to mix it in, but considering the butters, the wall of evergreen would be, best case scenario, are, in our eyes.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, Mike Gibson, one forty-two, Old Forest Road, um, just wanna point out, for the planning board. And the town planner is gonna hopefully look into this for me, but the stormwater regulations. Section seven, B, three, and four require notice to be others. We never received a notice, you'll see through my general comments that this is pattern of sloppiness from the applicant here. As you can see, as you're all at one forty-two, clearly marked on all of your plans. So, I want some sort of, excuse me, exclamation for what is happening. Buffer, you just said thirty feet. We've been continually told by Stephen Rafferty and others that are part of this project that it would be fifty feet. Why does that change? Do you think it's not part of the study?
So maybe, the zoning requires a.
No, no, I don't know, I, I know what it requires, it, it's been represented multiple meetings, sorry, receiving input that it would be fifty feet. Even though the requirement is thirty. We've now chosen to retreat back to the minimal requirement. When did that change for you?
During detailed design, we determined that we did on the southwestern portion of the project property. Uh, we need to extend our area disturbance to meet stormwater grading, or grading for the stormwater infrastructure. Um, we have sought to maintain as, as much as we can, but there is a spot right now where we're not proposing a thirty foot distance, you're making a report to the property line in that area. In many cases along the proper line, it's, it's more, but that is the minimum that we're showing.
Well, sure, the building's more than thirty, but you're proposing cutting up to thirty, is that correct?
Our, our limit of work is, is much further than thirty feet along most of the property. Yes, the, uh.
It's this line right here.
That's the third.
No, this is the limit of work, so for example, in this area.
Yep.
That's gonna be undisturbed. That's.
During, during building as well?
During building as well, this is that thirty foot line, that dotted line.
That, that line below is gonna be all kept, you're saying?
That is the end.
Yep, um, alright, and then, multiple times, and most recently, special town meeting. September nineteen, twenty twenty-three, town administrator was going to make a comment at this point. Uh, oh, no, excuse me, it's a select board meeting a year ago, that the lagoons will not get larger, they could get taller and larger. It was to, you can call it a retention pond or whatever you want, but that was like a third lagoon right there, that you've added since that time. Why are we adding all of these additional things, why is stormwater not being funneled to the lagoons or somewhere else? That seems to be increasing. Lagoons are similar concept.
There's too many functions of, of water retention that we have on site. Um. What you're calling there is a third lagoon is part of the stormwater infrastructure in the site, the water that flows through that. Uh, it's rainfall, it runs off a roof, off the surface, off the ground. Uh, and through that, that structure, that basin. What's referred, been referred to in the past as lagoons, uh, but perhaps more accurately, say drying beds. The water that flows into those, uh, comes from two places, one is direct rainfall, it falls directly onto that. Uh, and the second primary source is flow from the treatment. And those, uh, have remained as a number two, that water from the treatment plant. Uh, filters does not go into the stormwater system, it's retained in the sand drying beds. Where it's recycled back to the head of the plant. And the organic material, the minerals, uh, that are being removed and filtered. Are allowed to be stored in that area, and then eventually removed from the site. So, uh, they look dimensionally the same, but functionally, they're different in terms of water.
Does that line just right?
That's correct.
Those sand drying beds.
That's correct.
So that it won't be.
That's correct.
Help with this, on the third one, that's almost like a phase that's starting to seep, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's seeping, it's definitely like, oh, yes, so it's definitely wider than the ones you can see with one, the community, with the doctor, with the doctor, we'll have like a wider swath of, then it's like, right?
Correct, uh, one more comment on my neighbors, and then I'll wrap it up. Uh, light, lucid neighborhood, what's that look like?
So, uh, we have, uh, we've one. We have one or two, uh, light fixtures on the building itself in the areas that were opened up. Uh, and then we have, uh, shielded dark sky compliant light fixtures around, uh, the access road. Uh. Those are designed for safety lighting along the roadway. It's not an athletic field, it's a minimum amount of lighting just for access purposes and safety.
Got it.
Right now, uh, we've, and, and just to further that. We have received a comment about the height of the poles. Uh, our initial design intent was to use fewer poles, um, and have it thirty feet high, so we can get a low broad spread. But then it's revised to be twenty foot poles, that's fine, it will increase the number of poles, uh, just to have appropriate light density for the progress. But we can review that, um.
Okay, so I think you'll note through what I brought up tonight, a lot of things have changed, especially things that. Siraphid and members of the town have represented to us. The select board apparently doesn't want to hold you all accountable, or why things have changed, because they just take in the information and don't ask it. There's been a lot tonight that has been said that, oh, we'll look into it, oh, that will be handled, don't worry about it, or, oh, we will have that planned. I wanted to know who also needs to go to hold, learn current accountable. To actually follow through with all these things, and I hope the planning board, that's elected officials, but. Kind of a rhetorical question, but it's our job.
That's our job, that's our job, right, I mean, one of the things that I think is maybe fundamentally we are forgetting. Is that this is the initial of what you're doing. And comments have been made, issues have been raised. And nothing can be solved in one, or public. We will review this to the nth degree. And I mean, we're not sure. That. Questions that are asked are answered. Hopefully, we can not be able to satisfy everybody. But this is in the best interest of the town situation, but the planning board will ensure that this process will be open, transparent. We need this water treatment plant, and it has to be the best thing that we can have. So we're working on it while we can't resolve everything this evening, this is going to be continued. So, I think.
Before we, that, that was followed up on a question that someone asked about the lighting. Did you mention that there're gonna be lights at the dock, right, which are walkback glass, I assume?
Right.
Is there a way to structure that so that? That, you know, it's not a direct impact on your butters across the land, is that really the decision everybody sees?
Yep, we'll review that, uh, the actual language here.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Bill Donovan, eleven, Dr. Silryat, and a few of neighbors here this evening. I have just a, two, two very similar questions. As you leave our street, Dr. Silryat, right now, we look at a nice wooded tree line area. Did somebody show me on a slide, I apologize, I went to it earlier, I was a little late getting here, but, uh.
Yep.
Where will there be a buffer between the building and Route three A?
Yeah.
And where are the curb cuts to enter the property? You must have. It's right now, when you leave the street, it's a nice street, it's a nice fellow. You're looking at a tree line area. Looking at a commercial building, I know the town, every, you know, we need water. But it's not gonna enhance property of the back.
So you go get this, sir, and see this, this is where it's gonna be, so can you tell us approximately, we made it by the, the street cross?
Doctors.
And where, where was, where was Dr.'s Hill in this, yeah?
On three A.
It's off to the right.
Where's the Lutheran church?
Do you can see the Lutheran church parking lot in the left hand corner?
Okay.
So you're up past that driveway, but right here, sorry.
A little bit there, yes. Will there be a buffer between? Sorry if I'm blocking anybody's view, but will you leave the trees? So, there'd be a.
I have, can have a buffer, they have to.
They do, okay. And the cut to, into here is, I still don't have a good handle as to how close that is to Dr.'s Hill, but.
It is.
Yeah.
It's not five hundred number across, Kevin, do you have a, do you have a file this? For a first.
Yeah, well, one.
Can you show the other?
Can you show the other of?
Yeah.
It's like four or five hundred feet, I think.
Yeah. Close, yeah.
Now, can you go to the layout plan? The Dr.'s Hill is down to the right, almost as you get to the end of the day.
Right here?
Yep, right to the house.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, the point I was trying to make, you know, you come out, you see, you know, trees, looks nice. With the building, I know we're gonna have to have it, I guess that's where it's gonna be. But it's not gonna enhance property values, if, if there's some way, you know, that we could buffer the appearance, hide it a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, well, we have to, well, for two reasons, one is there is a setback, the other reason is just security. You don't want people to know that there's a water in the way back there.
Well, I'd like that, I'd like to get that.
We need to kind of keep that a reminder.
Well, I think everybody in Dr.'s Hill would like to get that, you know. You know, I started to roll and roll wood.
Sharon, is there anybody online?
Yes, we have a computer online that would like to ask.
Thank you.
Oh, no, go with that, I suppose you don't.
Nana, your, just your name and address, please?
Um, yeah, this is actually Bruce Arbenes.
Hey.
He's my wife's, uh, iPad. I, I live at, uh. I live at twenty-three Ganapasture Lane, I'm chair of the Water Resources Commission. And, um, I believe my question was asked before, but I didn't quite hear the answer or understand the answer. And it has to do with the drying beds for the effluent that comes out of the water process. And, um, the question is, is it? Is there any chance that that could overflow and run down the hill towards the reservoir?
The primary source of water going into those is, uh, backwash from the filters in the building, which is. Uh, controlled by the treatment plant operators. The way those drying beds are sized is essentially for one drying bed to be used. Uh, for a long period of time, say a year, with the other drying bed being empty and, and offline and, and dry. Uh, so we have inherently redundant capacity, uh, between the two drying beds, if, if ever they needed to use both. But primarily, one is in service and the other is, is out of service at a given time. Uh, and they are designed to have freeboard above the operating, the maximum operating water level. Uh, at the end of the operating period when the maximum salt accumulation occurs, so, no, they're, they're. They would not overflow because the operators to the treatment plant control the flow to the, through the backwash.
How much is the freeboard?
Two feet, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sharon, is there anyone else? Um, Jen, we're trying to unmute you, you'd like to hit yes and then give your name and your address. You have your hand raised, thank you. All set, whenever you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Jennifer Kuhn, I'm at twenty, Harry Litchfield Lane. And I just wanted to ask the board if they could request some research done for some sustainable. Green, um, solar panels or, um, something to conserve, um, energy and electricity. Um, it seems like the recreation is getting, the recreation committee. Has had enormous electric bills from the fields and the lights and everything. And they seem to just be getting brushed off from the select board and other people I've spoken to. But, um, I'd like to ask the board to please do some research, and I have two examples if I could share them. I have some PDFs I can share, but I'm not sure if I could do that in this meeting. But I talked.
That, that's good, Jennifer, actually, you did tell us that it was, uh, energy that we could put solar panels on, it's south facing, correct?
Absolutely, um, and further, there's, you know, a lot of south facing slope on the site, and for parents' purposes, we've chosen to revegetate, that, that could also be ground based.
Is there any reason you can't acquire renewable energy out of coal that can make this zero carbon?
That would be a, a town purchasing policy question.
Has that been addressed, has that been, question been asked?
The, no.
Yeah, hold on, Jen.
Not, not within the context of the treatment plant design, but certainly, turned out as, yeah.
Yes, Jennifer, you're all set?
Um, well, I did have an example, um, the town of Duxbury is building a new DPW facility, and there are examples of the solar panels on the roof. So that would be a, a very good example of something that we could do at this facility, since the roof seems to be fairly large.
Okay, we will look into that, thank you for your, uh, advice.
Thank you.
Hold on, yes.
Just, uh, one thing, I believe we are at about a hundred and five percent for what our credits are for our renewable. So that's, we're giving some now, I believe, the vote tax on credits, so we're in fair fight, and so if we have to get our max, it's taking past.
So what's this, what's the load for this facility?
Um, it's going down, I don't have, hopefully, I don't know when that closes, but then it's one thing, saying is, we're even getting credits. But if you set up, so then, solar panels, there's something else to go on.
We can, I would be nice to understand if that can be a question.
I think the biggest problem is storage, because it's running at certain times.
No, I, I, I get that, I mean, you don't have a big enough solar battery to handle this facility.
Yeah, and it's all prepaid.
So that's why I'm asking, do we have enough renewable energy that we require? Use this source power for this facility, so that it's, as your partner. We will ask what the question is, one of the things that the town has pushed a lot of residents participate in. And so I'm asking the question as to whether the town will participate in that. Why don't we go?
Okay, okay, thank you. Alright, um, hold on, uh, Jennifer, we will, if you want to go, would you? Jennifer, we will, if you want to go with your PDF, we'll be happy, we'll get it. But thank you for your, for your question, thank you. Yes, Mary.
Savannah, tunnel fifty, Dr. Seldra. I just have a question on the entrance. Looking at this diagram, we're going in and out the same way on the northern. Who uses the southern one? Only the trucks that go around the building? And why is there an in on that as well? I would think that if they're coming up with the other.
No, there's only.
No, obviously, okay, it's only one.
Yeah, the, the southern entrance is intended to be exit only for deliveries and town vehicles.
Sharon, is there anybody else online?
No.
Okay, um, one more question I can give a bunch to go through, yes, Mary. Regina Schultz, twenty-seven, Doctor Silver. Um, I would like to know, how large are these trucks that are going to be delivering chemicals to the water treatment plant on a daily basis? On a daily basis, always, how long, and how big? How, how big?
The, the frequency of deliveries will vary during, during the year. Certainly during the summer, it could be that, that frequency, but most of the year there's adequate storage for more than a month for each year.
Milk, size of a milk truck, size of.
Think of a, um, that, a, a water truck that might deliver to fill a pool, for example.
Yeah, milk truck.
Yes, yes, yes. It, it could be, it's designed to be a fifty-five foot long truck.
Okay, so will those trucks go in that entrance that I see in pale blue there?
Yes.
And then they'll dump and come out that same.
They'll come out the southern side.
All right, okay. Um, as Susan said, why do we need another egress on that road? It is very dangerous.
So you don't want them coming back the same way they.
It's a security issue.
There's no place to turn around though, yeah.
We have to do. We have to, it's a security issue and it's a why.
By the char, this is what they want.
Okay, two entrances in and out, oh. Yeah, I, my whole question, I have to wrap myself, we have a long picture.
Well, I, I think she needs to go first, but, but we're butters, so I think we can hang on.
But I have a whole, we have a public hearing, it's ten minutes. About ten minutes.
You know what, I mean, we're all butters, I can't help you, you have a question.
Like I said, yeah, this is just out of this public hearing that is any.
I, I understand.
So my name is Patricia Butler, I live between land and the pond. And we're decided we're going to cut most of the trees because the front takes up most of the land. And I'd like to know if you have a contingency plan, so the water that might.
And can't really hear, I'm sorry.
What's your case, you do some play for the water, let's all the trees cut down. The stormwater, the stormwater.
Yes, the. In the area behind your home, there's a wetland between your property and our limit of work. And in that, in that area, we're about two hundred feet from your property line to our, our limit of work. And that, that wetland serves as a, as a buffer between your property and, and the town project. The majority of the stormwater from the, the top part of the site is actually sent back to the west a good way from your property in, in the stormwater conveyance design going, as we're looking at the, the TV here, to the top and left and, and back away from your property. There is an area of the site essentially from the sand drying beds directly down, that is direct drainage. But because we're capturing so much of the water uphill of that and sending it in a different direction, that's how we're able to manage the, the site's stormwater towards your property.
So what if like the detention basin you have there?
The site grading and the stormwater is pitched towards the southwest and away.
So it's still a lot right on the south?
Um, southwest, so. Yes. So in this area of the site, the water that falls in these, in the sand drying beds stays within it, all pitched to stay within, and then it's sent back around to the head of the plant. The area of stormwater that would run towards your home was really just the direct runoff from here. But we're capturing everything else that's uphill of that. This has zero stormwater runoff from it because it all stays within it and everything else is funnelled this way.
So going to the back of the property?
Yes.
But it will eventually come out that way?
Well, it eventually flows down into tech factory.
So you're going to direct the water into the pond?
Eventually, any, any stormwater that's not infiltrated on the site follows the, the path of drainage off the site in this control.
So, yeah, I have one more question, that's it, yes, it's.
How you doing? Steven Young, five old words wrote, I'm going to part to the north, what's the box to the north of that? In that right there.
That's the septic field.
And, and what's the distance between my lot line and our septic? Is that the whole septic at the box?
Yes.
Is that it? How far, what's the distance on that?
It is more than thirty feet.
And the setback of your line, thirty-five feet, it meets my, my stone wall, right? So that's not a setback of, of thirty-five feet all the way around. That's only. See where that corner is?
I do, and, and so that being a, a, a zoning setback of fifteen feet to the property line where we're not here to build, we'll look at the grading in that corner and see if we can tighten that up further still.
Uh, cool. Why, why, what is that, what is that? You know, that fifteen side setback mean, what is that?
That's a zoning requirement.
No, it's a zoning requirement, is it, is it going to be cut or is it like, is, does that mean it's going to be all the trees in that area? Between me and my stone wall are, are cut now?
No.
I don't know what that means.
It's, it's just showing the, that, that's just a, a rule on the side lot line. Can't do anything but it's fifteen feet, so it's just showing that location for reference. There's no work happening at that point.
The limit of work is the one, right?
And the limit of work is that tree. So beyond to the. Yeah, okay. So this is your property?
Yeah.
This is the tree line. This setback is just, we do this to every plant, like, we put it here too, so we know the building can't go closer. We just continue the lines, it doesn't mean we're doing anything over here. Right, okay. So this is not a rock wall. You said this was a rock wall. Oh, okay, well. It's a tree line. It's a tree line, okay, and, and so from the septic system proposed, yeah, that thing. Could you shave that from there over? From here over? Yeah, exactly. So the reason that this is the way it is, is this is a small retaining wall. And grading comes out this way to reduce cost for the tenant. To what? To reduce, to reduce the wall. So if we go back to this plan, this is a wall, okay? We pulled grading in so that this wall, instead of looking at a wall, you're looking at a nice hill, which. Sure. You know, like, this will probably have to be somewhat maintained and kind of mode. But like, this area doesn't, like, we could look at plantings, it, it, there's no reason. It couldn't be. It couldn't be kind of what it is. And what do you have to do, what do you have to ask for if you're within the thirty-five feet? You know, it's only fifteen feet.
The septic system meets the, the setback requirements to the property line.
Well, okay.
It's, we, we need to grade out that way to, for visual appearances and to make it, it's kind of smooth and natural transition there.
Sure.
That you're looking out towards it, you're not seeing a wall, you're not seeing.
Right, 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 okay.
We, we brought the grading out that way, but it'll be replanted.
I do, one more question. So if we can go back to the very first couple slides of the, of the three million gallons per day, right? So currently today, we're, we're taking some gallons out of however many gallons out of whatever reservoir or, or old looking bucket, right? And that, then we're saying that we're going to take more out of the actual current reservoir, right? Not the old bucket.
The facility is designed to treat water from the existing old looking bucket source, which is permitted up to three million gallons per day of the water.
So, so how, how do we have, so you, you want to take out three million gallons, so called, you know, you could take, do it within sixteen hours, right? And you said during the summertime is mostly what you're going to be using, right? Do we have three million gallons a day in the reservoir to be able to, to suck out that much water? Because from what I understand, there's not that much water in that because it's only about, you know, six feet deep. So are we building something that we don't even have the capacity of water to pull through?
There are many times of the year when that.
Winter, it's frozen, in the winter, it's frozen. Springtime, summertime, not so much, maybe this year, you know, we were pretty lucky. Uh, but summer and fall and winter, it's frozen. So it's just springtime.
The, the state has permitted the town to withdraw up to three million gallons per day from that source. Uh, and so that was the, the design capacity of the facility is to maximize that, that source. There are measures that the, the town can undertake to increase the storage capacity, dredging some of the accumulated sediment, things like that, within an old looking bucket that are, you know, potential future projects that would.
That's not in here, right?
This, this project is designed to treat the water that the town is permitted to take from that source.
Even though it's permitted to take, it doesn't mean you get happen in there.
You may not have it at any given day, but you may have it.
Right. Or you might not have it at all during summer, dry summer. And, and, and what's the capacity that you could actually bring that down to? So you don't affect the fish because it's, 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 it's a protected, you know, first area, right?
Sure, yeah, and there is a water management plan for that purpose, probably best.
Has anybody seen any of that? This is, it's a town, seen any of that, I don't know.
That's a, that's a document that town uses to manage that water.
All right, well, thank you very much, I, I know that this seems rushed, but we can have a very logical question. So if you, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing. Second administrative review and stormwater permit for Sterns Meadow Water Treatment Plant and four cookie creature justice pushing highway until October twenty-sixth, one twenty, six thirty P M. And continue your time for action provided the town for till December first, twenty twenty. It's zero segment.
Yeah, we have to do a roll call.
I can roll call, please.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Thank you unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on.
Next time.
And you can use five. That's a whole, yeah, that's a whole check of five years, we said something, they're lying. Check it.
Yeah, oh, oh, I think, yeah.
Renee, do you like, did, did.
Give them to you, have it. No, I don't. I told them that they could keep that.
I'm sorry. Especially in this car.
Yeah, I get you.
Yeah, I know. But that.
We got three parts on, lots of the, that was, I did that. But it's not. They'll, you know, it's, it doesn't matter. I'm getting tired of here, I can't do that, it's, I'm.
Steph?
Uh, I got her.
Steph, we're on a break.
Oh, oh, you are, you are, okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Great. I'll read this.
Uh, could you be, we are reaching the meeting of what we're having today. September fourteenth, twenty twenty three.
You don't know.
In accordance with Master in laws, chapter forty A, section nine and eleven, and the city its own bylaw, section five thirty accessory dwellers special permit and section nine forty referrals, planning will conduct here at eight P M. For a little late. On Thursday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty three, the second hearing room at town hall, six hundred chief justice pushing highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant owner Stephen S. and Catherine and Drew for accessory dwellings, special permit. Some accessory dwellings be located in addition to existing single family home at property located twenty eight, four lane, situant property as shown on assessors map law, parcel fifty four dash one, dash one, plans are available, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, come on up.
No, there's not. We're not sure. Is there? Um, we're not sure if there's anyone online that's representing twenty eight Torres Lane. If you are, you please raise your hand if you're online and hear of the representative for that project.
No, we would, we're pleased.
Wait.
Is somebody there? Okay.
Can you, um, can you please identify yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes? Can you please?
Oh, uh, I'm, yeah, I'm I'm the homeowner, Stephen Drew.
All right, let me tell us what you want to do, please.
Sure, we want to put a twenty by sixteen in-law apartment on the backside of the house. So that my wife and I will occupy, actually, my oldest son, his wife and a young daughter will occupy the main house. Yeah, real estate's just too darn expensive around here.
Um, technically, technically, it needs three compartments of the zoning bylaw for this. I mean, part of the parking is in the town right away with the driveway. So that's something you want to consider that is the portion considered. Rebecca, do you have any questions?
Not quite yet.
Steve?
Um, well, you can say that the parking scene is town right away. What is the person from town right there?
Oh, well, the existing driveway is in the town right away. The if you, the site plan shows that the.
Right, all of the.
No, the property, the property line goes here. So you have a big portion of the driveway in the town's right way. I mean, so that such that car you'll be sticking out in in the town right away. But it is a dead end street. So.
So there's there's a couple of driveways, though. There's, um, there's the design driveway, and then there's an old basketball hoop that we've been parking cars in for the last twenty-five years there. So we wouldn't leave any cars on the street. That that's not our intention.
Can I see all of that? Yep. I I I don't have any, but don't you think quite you're.
I thought all the right ways, down right ways, because the the area along the three blocks of town.
Yeah, this is just a large portion of the driveway, enjoy the car park.
There's enough parking, or they wouldn't be parking on that down right way.
No, there's enough parking, so you can get two cars probably in each driveway. So that's.
Correct, that's that's correct.
That the plan?
That's correct, just two, two cars in each driveway.
You do anything to add? Is there an entrance and exit runway? So what, can you tell us where the entrance to the accessory dwellings, please?
Sure, so there's going to be a, um, there's going to be a, uh, the the twenty by sixteen addition is going to go off an existing twenty by twenty family room that's off the back of the house. It kind of stands alone, has its own cable roof. It is not under the roof line of the original cape. So we're going to go off that twenty by twenty family room that went in by twenty years ago. Um, uh, in a west turlie direction, and that's the twenty by sixteen addition that will be joined to that family room. So my wife and I will have the twenty by twenty plus the twenty by sixteen. The second means, so the first means of aggress is a sliding glass door that goes into that twenty by twenty family room. The second means of aggress will be a door that will be designed in the twenty by sixteen addition that will go out to the north side, a single swing door down a set of stairs. So there's a big slider that goes into the twenty by twenty that's going to be part of this in-law apartment and a single swing door, you know, normal door that goes out to the north off of the addition. I believe it's in the plan sketch somewhere.
McLean, you have anything to add to this?
Go again.
Uh, Bob McLean, do you have anything to ask?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Mr. D'Avari, if you're here. I move to make the following comments. Fact one, on July thirty one, twenty twenty three, applicant Stephen S. and Catherine and Drew apply for a special permit for accessory dwelling in a single family home and property of twenty eight Torres Lane to according to the town's such as assessors records and the deed, the property of twenty eight Torres Lane is done with us, Stephen, Catherine, Catherine and Drew. Pre- based on the floor plans submitted with the application, planning who finds the floor area or accessory dwelling to be three hundred twenty square feet. The floor area of the primary dwelling is two thousand four hundred ninety-five square feet, according to the application. The accessory dwelling is thirteen percent of the floor area of the primary dwelling. This meets the size requirements of five thirty point two F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings, as the bylaw allows, seven hundred fifty square feet of forty percent of the total floor area of the primary dwelling, which includes greater. The accessory dwelling is supported to the existing single family home. For the accessory dwelling, it will be a complete separate housekeeping unit, and then will be only one accessory dwelling on the water. The property is in the residential R two zoning district as well as the water resource protection district. The proposed accessory dwelling structure meets all required setbacks, building height and yard requirements for primary dwelling. The proposed accessory dwelling is to be located in a middle addition, single family home. Access will be by a door at the rear of accessory dwelling as well as to the primary dwelling. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be competing with the primary dwelling. The building permit plan for twenty eight Torres Lane in situant mass by Mackenzie Engineering Group, dated May thirty one, twenty twenty three, shows the location of the existing primary dwelling and the proposed accessory dwelling. The plan shows two existing driveways extending into the right of way, the forest lane, which appear capable of supporting two cars each. This appears eligible to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling, ample parking appears to be provided. Now, the applicant owner has submitted a signed and notarized statement that he will occupy one of the dwellings completion of the project. Ten, accessory dwelling will be served by service by the town water and a private separate system. The water department has commented that as long as accessory dwelling does not have separate utilities, then there does not need to be any changes to the water service. The board of health commented that one of the bedrooms existing in the primary dwelling can be made into an office, the wide opening and low closets. Eleven, the application needs standards in the situant bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit. Mr. Second?
Second.
Just one discussion.
I mean, a roll call.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Okay, no, okay, Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor.
I move to approve the special permit for accessory dwelling at twenty eight Torres Lane with the following conditions, in addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings that approved by the planning board at the public hearing on twelve seventeen fifteen. One, so for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially enforce plans submitted with the application by Rockwood Design in date seven twenty five point three. For Drew residence, twenty eight Torres Lane consists of eighteen sheets, including cover, eight one notes and legend, eight two existing elevations, eight two one elevations, eight two four two elevations, eight two point three elevations, eight two point four elevations, eight three existing first floor plan, eight three point one proposed first floor plan, eight three point two proposed first floor plan, eight four existing second floor plan, eight four point one proposed second floor plan, eight six existing roof plan, eight six point one proposed roof plan, eight seven building section, A dash A and A eight building section, B B, S one first floor friendly plan, S one point one proposed foundation plan, building permit plan twenty eight Torres Lane, dated May twenty first, twenty twenty three, by Mackenzie Engineering Group. And to the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one of the location size indicated on the floor plans submitted with the application. No further expansion of accessory dwelling for this area is allowed without order of the planning board. For a front occupancy accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that an owner is living in one of the dwelling units and give me certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided on March first yearly. Five, all requirements that the board of health, building department, zone board, appeals to private public works, private power and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy that leaves us dwelling. Six, accessory dwelling shall conform all applicable standards in building plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, health codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must be all required, above the deal, don't make water division in the accessory dwelling for the accessory dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed should be downlighting and not to shed light on the bottom properties. Construction work shall not begin Friday, seven A M. weekdays and eight A M. on Saturdays and shall cease relatively in seven P M. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal state and federal holidays. Construction includes idle vehicles, delivery of materials to the site and all other construction activities. Ten, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased for property. As the property is in the water resource protection district, roof top runoff must be designed to recharge the first inch of rainfall. Recharge shall be attained through a site design infiltration of basins or swales constructed for the three foot minimum separation between bottom structure and maximum groundwater elevation so that nitrogen is removed. An artificial system of recharge may be required which is not degrade groundwater if there is more than fifty percent impervious area for the site. A plan for obtaining runoff requirements must be provided to building commissioner as part of the application. Eleven, erosion and sedimentation control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation of leading site or construction. Silk should not be used if necessary. Twelve, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be keeping for primary dwelling unless otherwise required by the Massachusetts Building Code and new exterior stairs. Eight, by private or secondary means of egress, three second dwelling shall be located on the side or rear of the building. Thirteen, at least two private, off two parking spaces shall be available, but used by the occupants of the accessory dwelling, in addition to those parking spaces required for primary dwelling. Mr. Second? All in favor? Roll call.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Burbine?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous, all in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Good luck.
Have a good one.
Thanks, everybody there.
Thank you. Moving right along, eight fifteen. Uh, we have a discussion of stormwater permit for twelve carriage house way. Ms. Lewis is going to accuse herself, said she was involved with this crime. This is going to vote, we're just having a discussion, let me watch issue, stormwater, right?
Right.
So, Mr. Stone?
Now, it's.
No, it's.
Yeah, okay. What is the thing in the water address?
It's no, and it isn't representing.
No, this is something you said on the.
So it's using post cap.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hammond?
Good evening, Jed Hannah with Atlantic Coast Engineering. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. So what we have here, proposed at twelve Carriage House Way is a proposed pool. The HOA covenants at this subdivision, as you're probably well aware, didn't allow pools. However, there was a provision that said that if there was stormwater mitigation, you know, we could entertain, the town would entertain, allowing pools. There were two other properties in this subdivision that got permits and those pools are, one is being installed and the other is going to be installed at a future date. We had the site plan reviewed along with the stormwater report by Merrill Engineers. We had really two rounds of comments and then a minor third round of comments, which we just got back the final version today. We addressed all their comments. The proposed pool is fifteen by twenty-five feet with a, you know, proposed patio around it, as you can probably see on the site plan. What we're proposing to do to mitigate the stormwater runoff is install three CULTEX systems. If you look at the bottom of the uh, zoning requirements table, we're really over mitigating in terms of recharging stormwater into the ground groundwater table. I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry. I sent it to you electronic.
Okay, so the the net increase in impervious area is nine hundred sixty-two square feet. We're proposing to capture two thousand two hundred eighty-two square feet. So we're more than doubling what is really required in an effort to more than satisfy the requirements. And of course, you know, given all the additional rain that seems to be taking place over the last several years, we're we're kind of over designing this. We're also proposing to put in a catch basin in the rear, given the topography. That was one of the comments from the peer reviewer. And so that that's really the layout. It's it's a fairly simple pool layout, again, fifteen by twenty-five with a with a patio surrounding it. We need to rotate the stairs. Given the location that the that the stairs are in now, just basically rotating them ninety degrees. Again, fairly straightforward layout. Gutters and downspout system to CULTEX. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Uh, no.
All right, I don't really have any questions. These are not so much different from the other two that we've put in, correct?
Yes, exactly. This this one's even smaller.
Okay, Ms. Burbine? And Mr. McLean?
I have no additional comments.
Okay, thank you very much. So Karen, all right, so the board, I I have, as you've done in the past, with the past two pools, you had me prepare it like it was a stormwater permit. So that's where all the prepared view has come in so far. So as of today, it meets the requirements. The question for the board is, do you want me to issue a stormwater permit for this pool? I do.
Is that what we did, we gave it to?
Yes, that's what you did.
Yeah.
So best practice says that we will, we will usually stormwater permit, but you will read all the requirements, do all your paperwork and let it go. All right, so, Mr. Hammond, I will not get you a permit tomorrow. It's going to take me at least a week and a half to two weeks to get your permit written. And then you'll get, you'll get the permit for the, uh, for the stormwater, you'll get a stormwater permit, very similar to what was done for the other two you submitted.
Excellent, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, have a nice night.
Have a great night, thank you.
Sure, can you pull it for Rebecca?
Yes.
So moving right along, uh, eight thirty, sorry. To continue with public hearing, a special permit accessory dwelling at nine ocean now. Ms. Fallin, here?
I'm, uh, on.
Yeah, we see you, okay. All right, so based on the last meeting, the board asked me to go back and look at a few facts there. I I did what the board asked me to do. A building permit was received for a living area on the first floor with no kitchenette and storage, and there was storage on the second floor. So that's what the building permit was issued for, which you all have copies of the building permit plan. A butter complaints resulted in a violation notice from the building department. Then the applicant applied for an accessory dwelling. The setbacks due indeed meet all the setbacks required because it's a corner lot and the twenty-foot corner radius is met. So setbacks likely, that was a question for last time, the setbacks meet the requirements. The planning board asked if she had an occupancy permit. Well, no, there is no occupancy permit because there is. if she had an occupancy permit. Well, no, there is no occupancy permit because there is not a legal dwelling unit. So, after the planning board issues an accessory dwelling special permit, then Ms. Foley will have to record the permit and then she'll be able to apply for a certificate of occupancy um with a legal dwelling unit. You asked me that what was inspected. What was inspected is what is out there right now. So, the inspections occurred for the for the accessory dwelling. So, I believe this means.
When you say what inspections, electrical?
Electrical plumbing.
On.
For for the finished product.
Okay.
So, I believe this meets the requirements of an accessory dwelling. And while it wasn't done the proper way, I believe that the board should approve the accessory dwelling special permit. Any discussion for the board? Ms. Foley, do you understand what you need to do after this?
Um, I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you understand the process now, what's going to happen, that you're going to have?
Oh, yeah, that would be great.
Okay, all right, thank you. Public hearing, is there any thought about why or anyone here in the room? No, thank you. All right, are you ready? I move to make the following findings of fact. Uh, one, on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, applicant Jennifer Foley applied for a special permit for accessory dwelling in a single family home at the property at Nine Ocean Ave. Two, according to the town's city assesses records, and the D, property at Nine Ocean Ave, known by Jennifer Foley. Three, based on a floor plan submitted with the application, the planning board finds the floor area of accessory dwelling to be six hundred seventy-nine square feet. The floor area of primary dwelling is two thousand one hundred seventy-four square feet, according to the application. The accessory dwelling is thirty-one point two three percent of the floor area of primary dwelling. This meets the size requirements of five thirty point two F of the zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings, as the bylaw allows seven hundred fifty square feet or forty percent of the total floor area of primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The assessors office indicates primary dwelling is two thousand three hundred seven square feet and accessory dwelling is eighty-one point seven two square feet, which is thirty-six point seven percent of primary dwelling and still allowed as at least less than forty percent of the accessory dwelling is support subordinate to existing single, single family home. For the accessory dwelling, it will be a complete separate housekeeping unit and then only one accessory dwelling on the lot. By the property is in the residential R three zoning district. The proposed accessory dwell construction needs all required setbacks, building height and yard requirements for primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is to be built in a recent garage addition to the single family home. Access will be wired with four inside of the house and a second door with a garage. Seven, the appearance of accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the second system design plan of Nine Ocean Avenue is to pass by Morse Engineering Company. It dates ten sixteen twenty with revisions to twelve nine twenty. Shows the location of existing primary dwelling and existing garage addition. The plan shows an existing two minutes driveway which appears to fit four parking spaces and garage is able to house two cars. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, the applicant owner has submitted a signed authorized statement that she will occupy one of the grounds on completion of the project. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by town water and sewer. The water department has commented that they have no comments, sewer department has no comments as there is no sewer for the house. Okay, I'll change that. Town water and private.
Private sector.
Private sector. Private and civil sector. All right, so eleven, the application meets the standards of the situated zoning bylaw for accessory dwelling special permit. I move for proof of special permit for accessory dwelling.
Ready? Get ready.
Instead of second, as I mentioned.
All in favor, uh, Ms. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Pfeffer.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Hi.
Ms. Bourbon. Mr. McLean.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. It's all in favor.
All right, I move for proof of special permit for accessory dwelling at Nine Ocean Avenue following additions. Two, in addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by planning board on twelve seventeen fifteen one, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions. Any construction shall substantially be launched. Plans submitted to the application by Estefan Designs dated eleven twenty-nine twenty twenty with a small foundation layout. Front and rear elevations, left and right side elevations, second floor plan. Foundation fully garage, Nine Ocean Ave to a mass O twelve six six. Septic system design plan with Nine Ocean Ave is to pass by Morse Engineering Company, eight dated ten sixteen twenty. With revisions ten until one. So, the number of bedrooms in accessory dwelling is limited to one in your location. And size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of accessory dwelling floor plan is allowed by the planning board. Three, equal occupancy of accessory dwelling will act to provide an authorized affidavit that an owner is living in one dwelling units by yearly certification. That the owner occupies one of the dwellings must be provided by March one yearly. Five, all requirements of the board account, the building department zoning board appeals to private public works. Private department and other town agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards for the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, metal codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must be all required of the water division, of the accessory dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed should be downlighting to not shed light on the bottom properties. Uh, construction work shall not begin Friday seven A M. Weekdays and eight A M. On Saturdays and shall cease middle late than seven P M. Or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal state and federal holidays. Construction includes idle vehicles, delivery of materials to the site and all other construction activities. Ten, runoff from a proposed accessory dwell shall not be increased for the property. Unless erosion and sedimentation control devices shall install to prevent any erosion or sedimentation of legal site during construction. Silk saw should be used as necessary. Well, the appearance of accessory dwelling will be in keeping with primary dwelling, primary left, the primary dwelling unless otherwise required by the Massachusetts Building Code and new exterior stairs need to be by private or secondary means egress. The accessory dwelling shall be located outside or rear of the building. Thirteen, at least two private off street parking spaces shall be available, used by occupants of accessory dwelling in addition to those parking spaces required for the primary dwelling. If you're second. All in favor?
Ms. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Pfeffer.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Bourbon.
Aye.
Ms. McLean.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. It's all in favor.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Foley.
Thank you. I really appreciate how communicative and helpful the the planning board office was. It was, they were a dream to work with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Moving along, eight fifty, all the jobs. All right, I'm. Oh, no, this is. There isn't. Okay, it's been. But just. Especially to how I love it. Okay, go along about why it's.
Wonderful. And for the right. For the court, we're Dr. Sullivan, counsel for Skip Riley, Mary and Father Mary. Uh, the applicants owners of sixty-two R U Road. Obviously, this is a formated or seated endorsement. Uh, property has been in private family for three generations, Skip with one married marriage. What he's seeking to do is to, as Lot A indicates, uh, have a formated lot, uh, skip to Mary and live at the back of property, raised their children there and my bill against his wife, uh, lived from the property. The formated lot that we have inside of Lot A is sixty thousand square feet and two hundred feet running to find Chief Justice Richard Hyland of the sixty thousand square feet, twenty thousand seven sixty-four apartments. Uh, the property is in both R one and R two. And we are hoping to get an endorsement so that, um, this is deemed that we gain on a lot. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I have to say, I've been here for a long time now, you mean, that I'm from, right away on three days.
Okay. It's not a very big continent, but.
No, but I'm really happy with before it is because you should come down that hill. Uh, Rebecca, do you want anything for this?
So, is that curb cover right there?
Yes.
I sent you a picture that shows you, uh, opening in the dark.
It's it's a guide, but it's no curb.
Yeah, and there is an opening between the two pieces and it is not often, but Skip and other people do navigate and communicate with land that way. Skip uses it over.
Questions for me?
And I have, I made my comment here. Karen? Take over the, take over the, for the block. Mr. McLean, any questions?
Uh, no, nothing additional.
Thank you. Technically, the website should have been approved prior to the form A, but if there's a problem with the lot area, that's not on either of us. So, I represent endorsement. It has access and. I move to an assessment of pool, uh, subdivision, total law, mark required, plant land in situ of Massachusetts, sixty-two R, Uthel Road. Settlers parcel twelve dash one dash one dash R, two foot base, base of the spot, Chief Justice Ray Aron, Morse Engineering Company. And dated eight thirty, twenty twenty-three for applicant slash owner Peter and Ariel Brown. As the division of land is not a subdivision, this every lot shown on the plan express, which have at least distance present is required by situated by law, zoning by law on the public way of Chief Justice, pushing. I like. If you're second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Pfeffer.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Bourbon. Ms. McLean.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. It's all in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm ready with an even round.
So, watch.
Do you want to have the party on Monday?
So, now we will be watching all business, business, or waters, first, I will run. Okay, so, our business study was to be of a. MBTA community, so, um, we had a conversation with our consultant. Uh, as you're you're all aware that the law changed in August and so, uh, now we're able to take advantage of having a mixed use district. Our consultant was able to run uh, North City Village Center in the NDTV district with modeling. She she subtracted the bottom floor and so she modeled, I think, uh, three floors. So, she's able to obtain two hundred and nine units as capacity for that. If you subtract two hundred and nine from our required twelve thirty-nine, then we're required to have ten thirty for our wealthy family capacity. Which means that we will be able to reduce the number of units per acre uh that we need to require probably to fifteen across the board, except where we already have, um, sixteen in the in the NDTV district. She's still running, she's still getting that, those numbers finalized. But we will be able to do something that is much closer to the existing zoning bylaw than the eighteen seventeen seventeen sixteen that we were going to have to go. So, um, by ha- by going with a mixed use district, we do not require commercial parking for 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 the, for our buy right developments. So, that, but what's the exposure there? The exposure is very little. Because most of your NDTV districts are in purpose, are determined or the cost is being permitted. And and North City, you have the town parking lot. They still have to provide the residential parking. So, the exposure is very little. The ground floor has to be mixed use and you have to allow a variety of mixed uses. We have to get this permitted by E O H S A a maximum of ninety days before town meeting. So, our.
What do you mean permit?
They have to.
Need review.
They have to agree to our mixed, our mixed use district. So.
They're not issuing perk.
No, no, this is, they're, they're just approving it, that you can have this mixed use district because you get the twenty-five percent offset and that it's, it's a real mixed use district. It has, it has the functions of, you know, providing, you know, um, you know, the transportation and the the shops, et cetera. So, um, our consultant is going to find out exactly when we should be applying, giving them our district, um, but we're we're fine tuning things. As part of the other portion of that, another part of the law that changed it last October was that you can only have ten percent maximum affordable housing for buy right projects. So, not too many firms do this market feasibility analysis, which are required to have. So, we're proposing we go to ten percent for the buy right in the V C N, only keep the rest of our. We're we're fifteen percent buy right, fifteen by, fifteen percent anyway, twenty percent by special permit. So, it's just for the buy right in the V C N that it needs to come down to ten percent. I think instead of, instead of playing around with trying to find a consultant, get a grant for feasibility analysis, then we might as well just drop it down. And we don't know what, how, timing wise. It's important that we get this approved by town meeting in springtime because we have to be in compliance by, um, September thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And I don't think it's worth five percent affordability to to risk it. So, as for zoning changes, we know that, so that our consultant is working on the zone, will be working on zoning changes as well. So, we know our density is going to change. We know that we're going to have some parking that has to change. Uh, we have a few parking things that are going to have to change. We're going to have to, uh, change a little bit in the affordability section. We're going to have to, um, table uses, we'll, we'll fix all that, whatever to try to do there. And we're gonna, we're gonna take out the portion of the bylaw on section four thirty point three, it's altogether dwelling complex. It doesn't apply to anything. Um, there was nothing under zone that, it conflicts with part of your V C N. So, we are taking that out. And so, in a, in a nutshell, that's that's about the zoning changes that we have to do. So, our consultant is working on this stuff right now. Next Tuesday, um, the, our working, our M K working group is meeting with, um, Laura Karen and Luis Russo, um, chairs of the advisory, uh, select and advisory board. And we're going over what, where we are right now. We are then meeting on September twenty-sixth with the select board to go over where we are. I've had some preliminary conversations with the finance director and there is a hope that maybe we can be able to at least extend our, maybe not have, have final wording by January tenth, right now, which goes to a final wording by January tenth, which pushes us to the public hearings in December. I hope that maybe we've got an extension on that and we also are going. And we also are going to watch, um, some type of graphics, I think, in the, in the advisory committees. Um, warrant, it's right helping you, so you have to try to obtain. Permission for that. So it's, it's very good news. From what we had been, where we had been before. We're on steady, we're making steady progress, but I won't give any final numbers for you probably until the meeting in October.
The crisis is that, oh, no. Now, you listen, our world is crazy, but we are so self tantalizing because we can do it. We can do.
We can do it. We can make the number and we can get the zoning changes.
Which is really pretty close to it.
And, you know, it's, we're, you know, we're, we are preparing a PowerPoint presentation for the select board. And it's not just three grants that go away if you, it's a sham, first of all, shall comply. And it's not just free, it's, it's about thirteen now. So it's a major implication if you don't comply. So that's the update of where we are, we keep, we keep working on that something. Just another quick zoning update as well. We had a meeting last Friday with Andrew Campanelli. Who is going to be, uh, working on providing the wireless communication by law. So at some point, we'll draft in October, we'll have a big meeting, um, and we'll go from there. Other than that, I can't, we can't tackle any others else for spreading that.
No, but I'm sorry.
And this is, this is big enough. Got it, there we are.
It's pretty rough.
That's correct. Our only time is now we have a new committee, spin on the bicycle committee, so I'll teach Karen and I have a few, just the people I got talking about. So we're just to contact people for the moment.
Okay.
Bicycle, we need to appoint representative to the bicycle committee. And we have a copy in the agenda, there's a meeting on Monday night. So.
I can't, mostly we check all of them.
So we, we need to appoint a representative and the representative is going to need to get sworn in before the meeting Monday night.
At the last, so, feels, not so good, but as a last. Track rules, I brought up electric bicycles. And there has been stuff on the news. These things are dangerous, they really truly are.
So, so, we need, who, who wants to be on the ground maybe?
Do you need to be a voting member to be the chairman? Or?
No, no.
Okay, I'll do it.
Excellent, thank you very much.
But there's been stuff on the news about it. Actually sometime put together a program to educate people on how we use, and some of these things, they're twenty miles an hour. So, yeah, I, of course, I have friends that have them.
I know, surely do. I have my actual, what I think, yo, something, you should, we'll talk about, I don't like to go. And you. Okay, but thank you very much.
I'll send you the agenda, um, tomorrow. So here you go.
I may have printed it out.
Here you go.
I think I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, okay.
I moved up for meeting minutes from August tenth, twenty twenty three and August fourth, twenty twenty.
Second. Your second.
Second.
Well, I'm so sorry.
I think seven.
Is your second? All in.
Ms. Lynn.
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Pritchard. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Burbine. Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Thank you, Anna, it's on favor.
Thank you, and we studied much.
Yeah, we, yeah, we did spend a lot.
I will approve the requisition of one thousand three hundred dollars to check in for period view services for eight seventeen countryway. Three thousand two hundred and ten dollars to check in for period view services for Laurelwood number seven. Lot four, two hundred and ten dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for period view services. Forty eight to fifty two, New Jerkway, gas backwards. One thousand five hundred forty dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for period view services for nineteen fourth place. Four hundred and forty dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for period view services. Five thirty three countryway. For five hundred sixty dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for period view services for sixty one in Jerkway. Five hundred sixty dollars to Chesapeake Consulting for period view services for thirty three in Jerkway, seven McDonald's Paris. One thousand seventy seven dollars, ten cents to go with the wooden roof, period view services in Seaside, Citu. Three thousand one hundred eighty dollars to check in for period view services. Eight seventeen countryway. That's three seven hundred dollars to Merrill Ford for period view services for Sky Sale Road. For one thousand nine hundred dollars for porcelain wood. Period view services, Banana Street, Elm Street, Lot five at six. One thousand six hundred and twenty dollars to porcelain wood for period view services. At three thirty four, Chief Justice Bushing Highway, Lot two, twenty five hundred dollars for porcelain wood. For period view services with three thirty four, Chief Justice Bushing Highway, Lot three. For one hundred fifty nine dollars, down and access to Amazon for office supplies. For one hundred twenty two dollars, twenty cents to gatehouse media for legal ad, for nine Ocean Air. For one hundred thirty dollars to gatehouse media for legal ad for stormwater regulations.
Is your second?
Second.
I'm in favor.
Ms. Lember.
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard.
Aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Burbine.
Aye.
Mr. McLean.
Aye.
Thank you, Anna, it's on favor.
So my only report is that, uh, the two things that I was looking for in conservation pushed off, was the stand across the road. The, uh, the J M A, what, whatever, in that, most of the, she, by her way, which is kind of what I think was thought that's common, right? They pushed, I think, so we got this, they pushed those off, I don't know, but I don't want to go out here. That's all I have, the liaison. Yeah?
Private rules and regulations, as I said, it was bicycles and. C P C? They canceled the meeting for the month, so. My only concern in terms of C P C is the, um. C P C approved and town meeting agreed to five hundred thousand dollars for windows at, 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 at wheel park. At the chairman of the Housing Authority Board, and I can't remember his name, saying how, have they needed these, they like to have it, blah, blah, blah. I done a little, whatever. Nothing has happened.
Well, I did, I have to say, people built the ball fields, they got right on.
They got it. And I, I was going to go to the Housing Authority Board, but it was such a tight as the select and stadium, six thirty into the stadium. So, I don't know, it's interesting.
That ball field is moving right along. It's supposed to argue down, isn't it? It was supposed to be down August fifteenth.
When, when are the travel of?
No. The blinds, the fan and whatever else. Yeah, we have a point in the development report.
Yes, so, um. That's putting a lot of time at Seaside, that's your answer. People there. So next time we'll be having a shore reduction request.
We'll, we'll get an estimate for that, right?
Yeah, Jen and I, Jen and I have had one this afternoon, or two hours. So you'll get an estimate for that. I was out at forty eight fifty two, New Jerkway, the end of August. Ninety five percent of the work is complete. They're having trouble getting the meadow established and the grass looks not great. The barn was due to be renewed and so I just asked him to give me five thousand dollars cash sure. And so does anybody have issue with that?
Yeah. I'm.
The gas station, gas station.
Oh, this is the extension.
Gas station.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
I, I mean, it's just, just so we have something, he's keeping, he is keeping working at it, but it's, you know, it's, you try.
That just has bad soot on it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which doesn't want to change. Um, the fifty kids that we wanted them to.
I know, but they weren't very thoughtful.
No, yeah. They're, they're. Yeah, there's stuff in front, um, and there's stuff on the side. They, we have, we continue to be inundated with stormwater permits. And, you know, people are applying for accessory dwelling in it, so we keep, we're keeping busy that way. Next meeting, we have nineteen four, which is College Court. You can refer that to design review. I assume you're going to because we've done a design review committee set up, meeting set up for October third. Eight seventeen was going to be a country where it was supposed to be all that, but they're not ready. So I, I just, I just want to make sure you don't have a problem if we just start putting the J M A together so that the design review can. Continue to get it, it's not a state, October third, normally we wait to get it referred from here. But that's, um.
Being proactive.
Proactive, it's good.
I think, right, being proactive on that one. I think that's all I have.
Well, you said on October third, I'm so sorry.
Design review for, for nineteen, um, four.
We would want to hang that over there.
No.
That's what I thought.
Like, I don't want to, well, no, don't have to be.
And you're not on the talk.
That's all I got.
And we all send it over. And they can go to the agenda. Your second, all in favor?
Ms. Lember.
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard. Ms. Lewis.
Aye.
Ms. Burbine. Ms. McLean.